We're ready to go. I'd like to call this meeting of the joint work session between the Silver Falls School Board and the Silverton City Council to order. Please note attendance Denise, and please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, another God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is our normal school board work session night, so I want to thank the city council members for adding another meeting to their schedules and joining us tonight to hopefully work together a little bit. Let's do some introductions. I think we'll just go around and have everybody state your name and whatever you want to about yourself. You want to start Jason?
Jason Fralinger, I'm the new guy on the Silverton City Council and owner of the local Yushak.
I'm Wally Lerman, been on the board several years.
Bill Cummins.
David Deason, Silver Falls supportive directors.
Ken Hector, City Council.
Julie Norris.
Lori Carter, City Council.
Tom Buchholz, Silver Falls School Board.
Stu Rasmussen, City Council.
Tim Roth, School Board.
Randall Thomas, City Council.
Owen Von Flue, City Council.
Scott Walker, City Council.
Mr. Von Flue, I'd like to point out you've had many unexcused absences.
That's funny. Okay, tonight we're here mostly to discuss the Eugene Field property. Just a little bit of introduction, this is a 90-plus year old building and the building and the property needs some reuse and some new ideas. The task force, the school board appointed a task force to look at Eugene Field and they recently completed their study and the recommendation coming from the task force amongst others, but one of them was to close Eugene Field as a school by the 2016-17 school year. And they also recommended to develop an action plan for the future reuse of Eugene Field School. So the community and everybody kind of knows what's going on, what the plans are. The school board's also done some surveys and through those surveys and community meetings, we've heard public concerns of what would happen to the building. That was one of the things we found out in our last bond major, is there was some uncertainty with people's thoughts about what would happen with Eugene Field. Some people have spoken that the city and the school district and the community all need to work together. So that's one reason we're kind of here tonight, to see if we can collaboratively work together and come up with some ideas and have some discussion about Eugene Field in particular and then other issues that anybody else feels important. So it's just going to kind of be an open discussion type. I'm going to start with that. I know that the school board, we've looked at the Eugene Field Task Force recommendations. I think the city council members, did you guys get it before this meeting?
Uh huh.
Okay.
No.
So I would just like to kind of open it up and talk about people's thoughts, if you have any.
Well, what comes to mind for me is that the two bodies, the school board and the city council, we both have a long laundry list of things that we need to do, that we believe we need to find community support for. And the school district is looking at Eugene Field and the other facilities. We're looking at parks, we're looking at the pool, we're looking at decaying streets and other infrastructure issues. As the two major taxing bodies, we need to coordinate what we do so that the people who are paying for it, it's affordable for them and they get the best bang for their buck. So I think that's the primary reason that we're here having the joint meeting is just to get everything on the table and understand each other's needs.
Yeah, thanks. I would agree with that also.
Mr. Chairman, well, I've been in favor of closing Eugene Field since my daughters were there and they're now in their 30s. So I think that's, the sooner the better. On the other hand, as far as using the building again for other purposes, has it been determined that it would be less expensive to raise it or to renovate it if it were reused?
We've had some, we've had quite a bit of work done on that. Some of the stuff was about the same. Sometimes it comes in that it would be, that it would be less expensive to actually tear it down and build something new. But I think generally it's kind of a wash, but it's what you end up with in the end.
I think the recommendation is we do not use that site as a, use that site as a school, however. So whatever repurposing or raising happens would not be used for school.
But if there were a joint municipal building or that could be a site later?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the school board, I think, just the school board and according to the task force recommendations is to, there aren't only, you know, major issues with the building itself, but where the building sits in relation to a good site for a school. It's between two major highways, you know, basically no green space, just asphalt playgrounds. It's just not, you know, and the board hasn't made any decisions yet, but a lot of people have talked about that it's just not a good location for an elementary school. It's not big enough. And so if the board decides that way, we would, you know, be moving kids out of there and the building would be, that's kind of what we're here, is if we, you know, if the board goes that way, what can we work together to come up with an idea for, to use the building for?
Well, we have needs.
David, did you?
So just to add on a little bit in answering your question is that the school district hasn't looked at renovating the building for any purpose other than a public school. And I think that that's quite, potentially at least quite different than renovating it or repurposing it for another use. So what we've looked at and the information that we have so far is that if we closely approximate the cost of a new facility for us to renovate Eugene Field for use as a public school again, should we decide to close it? And, you know, when you take into account the unknowns, this is based on what we know about the building, but as the experts who have advised us so far, and anyone who's lived in an old house that they've been renovating, because once you tear into the walls, that's where you really start to discover sometimes some nasty and expensive things. So, and just looking at the site, the size of the site and the size of the school population, and those are factors that we're taking into consideration. But we don't have any information about, you know, repurposing it for a different use.
No, the school district doesn't, but, but it could, it could be a site.
Oh, yeah.
That's been structurally discussed, you know, a number of times in the past in terms of making this building out of the site. It's never gotten very far.
What are some of the city's needs in that area, as far as the need, you know, possibilities for the municipal stuff?
One of the, I mean, probably the earliest hard deadline we have is to have our police department in a earthquake resistant facility by 2023, is that the right date? Yeah. So, you know, we acquired property up at Westfield Street with the thought of doing that there and then the sentiment has been, you know, city government really is a core city function and probably should be located in the business core or near it. So that would be an ideal site for that, but, you know, it's all dollars.
Bill, were you gonna?
Yeah, Tim, you mentioned, first, I read about the entire board and the committee's recommendations in our town. It was a good article. So I did, other than that, I didn't, don't have any information on what direction the real true ultimate plan is. But you mentioned by 2016-17, if there isn't a new facility built or one in the works to be built, what were you, what are the, where would the kids go?
The committee recommended to look at all, all the district properties and all the sites. They also recommend, you know, they were leaning, I think they were leaning towards the Schleter, doing something with the Schleter property.
That's right, that was a, okay.
All right, thank you. And the Schleter property, that's, you know, just probably speaking more for myself than the whole board, that, you know, in my mind, that would not include the two-story structure in the middle. We would need to do something, something other than that because that's not, in my opinion, that's not a good place for kids. But I may not be speaking for the whole board on that one. We really haven't had a lot of discussion about that.
Would that include renovation then or just as is, as is?
Oh, if we were to use that old part, we'd have to do major renovation.
Yeah, I think you'd have the same problems with, at the old part of Schleter as you would with Eugene Field. It's not earthquake standard. It's the same camp.
That's a lot of the same issues.
Well, excuse me real quick, not to bring up issues or use that word, but are you then going to enter into the mistrust or distrust of that building was not, should not be used if you revisit renovation there?
I guess I don't understand what you're.
Well, the premise was to move out of the Schleter Street campus to the new high school campus and the message was clear to the community that that facility was no longer to be used for.
Yeah, I understand that, that, when we talked about that, it was just the old two-story and three-story struck part behind that. It didn't include the single level wings because we have community roots in there now, but it did include the two-story and, and yeah, I very much remember that and that's part of why I, you know, said what I did earlier.
And we fully decommissioned that section of the building as well, so it's.
It would need major renovation, but like Tom said, we're kind of in the same spot there that we would be with Eugene Fields.
We haven't had any conversation as of, in a long time about trying to repurpose really that two and three story structure. Our conversations have been involved in using the wings, the single story pieces that are more structurally sound.
David?
I'd just like to add some of the information that we have gotten in the past, just to remind, I have a friend who always says to inform some, remind others. So, you know, the central part, the old part, the two-story part, the unreinforced masonry part of the Schleter Street School, presented some real challenges for renovation because it was designed for a, as a high school and we're looking for elementary space. So you have plumbing, you have everything built in a scale that's inappropriate for small children. So there's a substantial cost there. And then to renovate it to a seismic standard that's acceptable for a public school today is another very large and expensive challenge. So I hope that adds in answering your question.
Chairman, are you talking then about the bond issue this fall or when, or are you thinking of other options?
The recommendation of the task force was to go for a bond this November. And if we, I guess timeline wise, if we were going to try to build, and other board members, correct me if I'm wrong, but to timeline wise, if we were to meet the 2016-17 school year, we would have to, have to go for a bond soon. Just construction wise, if it was a construction bond. We haven't really got down to specifics yet about what that would look like.
We just had a bond election in May and I think that it went down by 18 points. And what can you propose to do differently in order to win the folks over to your side?
One of the messages we've heard, can I answer that? Or certainly this part of it, one of the messages we've heard from the community and we've gone out and done quite a bit of research and asked for feedback from the community, is that our bond was much too broad, trying to get too many things, too many people addressed, both Eugene Field as well as these in the outline schools. And so one of the messages we've been getting is to focus on Eugene Field School in the upcoming bond election.
Also a result of that bond, we would have hopped scotch kids around town. We would have Eugene Field kids, Robert Frost, Robert Frost, Mark Twain, and Mark Twain, over to Schleter Street, which I think, I think the board members might generally agree that in an ideal world, that'd be the right thing to do. However, it's really complicated things. It caused confusion and the approach we're hanging down now would be much simpler and much less expensive approach.
Straight up and down.
Yeah.
Julie, did you have?
He's round.
David?
Just to add on to that, to answer the question again, is that the less expensive part of it I think is key, at least in my view. I really agree with what Stu said about and has said in the past about limited resources and a little bit of what I've said at the, in the school board forum has been quoted pretty widely. And I'm one of those people that believes that the world of public spending and capital spending really changed dramatically in the financial crisis. And I just don't think, based on all the information that you get from almost every source, that the public has the means or the will to spend the way that we used to spend. You know, we always looked forward to sort of never ending increasing prosperity. And you see some really dramatic and basic changes in the economy that we live in, work in, post-financial crisis. So I think public money is really going to be hard to come by. And I think we have to, as Stu said, it would be really incumbent upon us to coordinate our efforts since we're the two largest consumers of public money because of that.
You know, another thing we've heard from the public is questioning what would happen to Eugene Field's site. Right now, we really don't have a plan. I think that's really a good reason for us to be here tonight, come up with some ideas. What could, what could happen to that site?
Ken?
Following up on Owen's comments about refocusing to just Eugene Field, which obviously favors that the cost of the bond makes good sense. But on the other hand, the entire school district still pays for that. So in the previous election that was defeated, I think part of the reasoning behind that bond was when outline schools needed, needed work. But also in, in, I don't want to say giving, in all of those other schools getting some attention. I think there was a thought or a hope that that would bring some support to the ballot box. Now just refocusing just on Eugene Field and even though it's a much smaller number, it seems to me that the opposite effect happens outside the city limits, so to speak, that people whose kids go to, you know, the Bethany or Silver Crest or any of the other schools in the district or Bucree, are going to say, wait a minute, who's going to benefit? Just the in-town kids are going to benefit that go there. And that's why I want to pose no. Or alternatively, they think this is going to change what kids are going to go and now our kids go, our outline kids are going to be dragged into the city, neither to which it's palatable. So I think that's still something to be considered, but I think you can't get around it. The second thing, and maybe a question best answered by Jason, who's our director of planning, with respect to Eugene Field in terms of renovation or raising it and repurposing, because I think Lori said something about a combined use. If it's a public use, I'm going to say a public entity use, i.e. school, government, whatever, aren't the standards for seismicity and some other things significantly greater than they would be for just a, say, just a mixed use business, say businesses on the ground floor and residential on the second floor, say? Would that be different?
That's more about building, that question.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know about building, but are there more stringent requirements for, just for example, seismicity for a public use building and that would add to the cost?
Short answer, yes.
Well, that's what I'm thinking is when you, so when you think of repurposing and you say the cost of renovating versus raising, part of that decision is going to be what the repurpose would be.
When all the other buildings are on the ground, ours is still standing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Ideally, though, if, if the bond issue passed and then the school district built a new elementary school, that would give the time for that to be completed before having moved the children over there. And then the city could then have the time to raise the building if necessary and construct a seismically acceptable municipal building, which would be put that into the downtown, which is what people want. So it sounds, it seems like it would be just a really, it'd work out really nicely.
Could be a nice transition.
Yeah.
Except the city would be in that same position. We would have to do significant bonding, one, because the school district, I don't think is going to give the property away and the cost of building this structure. So I mean, it's no easy transition.
We have a longer timeframe. We have a longer timeframe. And where is the, oh, excuse me, but what site, where is the proposed new school then?
We haven't, we haven't got that far. Schleter's a possibility, doing something to the Schleter campus is probably the greatest possibility right now, but we haven't, the board has just had real preliminary discussions about that.
Again, you might run into the problem of having to raise the old building because of the, all the inadequate seats it has and then running into those costs.
Yeah.
We believe that'd be the cheap, at least I believe it'd be the lowest cost site to put a new school out because we have all the infrastructure there.
Yeah, we're still, we're still kind of digesting the last bond election and what happened. So we don't have any specifics about going forward right now because it was clobbered. And I'd like to, I'd like to talk about Ken's point about the rural schools not voting for this, if it's just Eugene Field. I think he's onto something there. Ideally, in my vision, you would always want to have a proportion amount of rural schools, money spent in rural buildings as in town. That way, everyone's always voting for it together because if you just vote Eugene Field, then in 20 years, the rural buildings need, need help. And you guys are trying to build Silver's and Straits and stuff in here, it might be hard for the rural schools now to get anything passed. And so it'd be nice to try to link it. We, our previous bond, I think we were trying to build a 900 student building, you know, middle school. Now I think we're just talking, replacing the 500 plus seats at Eugene Field. I think that's going to come in a lot cheaper and hopefully we can have some money to, to, to decrease that issue, to really put some markers in the rural areas that says, we're here to stay, we're not going to build buildings in town and move all the kids to town, which is a common rumor you hear out in the country, that they just want to move them all to town.
Has been for several decades.
Yes. Yeah. And I think, you know, we need to really address that issue or to stop it passing again.
I think this time around, also the support from the rural schools, you've had a lot of community that have seen Eugene Field, you know, even if you're on the rural community group, you're looking at that and everybody that has seen just what's gone down in that building. And that there was a large concern specifically towards the maintaining the cave model. And, you know, that is not anything we are looking to change. You know, the task force has said, that's not something they want. And I think the last bond election, that was a huge concern with the support coming from the rural, not the support coming from the rural community.
What's the cave model?
Cave through eight model.
Okay.
You know, that, those other, those other schools that have that.
Eight model? Eugene Field always did strike me as something of a cave, but I didn't.
Yeah, and that we're not, that's not even on the table. It's not what we're looking at at all. Nothing would change there. And I think that's really important to get out there because there was an idea that that would happen.
I just wanted to clarify that the mandate from the state in 2023, which is not funded by the state, is for a new police facility, not for an old municipal building. And I think that you want to focus on, you have, if it came to pass, we have a new police facility, would it expand this available space within the current municipal building so that it could create a larger area for the seat to operate in. So that's really the focus of our requirement is a police facility, not a municipal building.
How much space does the city need for the police building? Thinking about the park or the open space north of Eugene Field?
You know, that would be something that the city government has not explored thoroughly yet for the council, so I can't really speak to that.
Well, they did actually, they did, when we were doing the, talking about the other building though, they did.
The Masonic building was about 6,500 square feet.
Yeah, that wasn't the ideal, that wasn't the ideal.
It was marginally, it would marginally work, but ideally, we need eight, 10,000 square feet.
Yeah, so that's, you know, okay.
I'd like the chief maybe to speak to the north pocket of the bond that you referred to because we did, was significant.
In 2008, we had a needs assessment done and it came back at that time for a 16,000 square foot facility that could then be expanded on later.
And that's when we looked at that property.
That did take into account some radically different population growth figures than what we're currently experiencing. It's pushed out farther, but it's still there.
No, but I was just making the point that we did in fact look at that property.
And it seems to, it seems to me, Councilor Hector, that prior to that, we even looked at Eugene Field as city hall and had some architectural, just conceptual plans of, there was some lockways and stuff right into town and open center space that by recall, and I, I mean, that was quite a few years ago and I don't even know if there's anybody left that would remember.
Is there anybody on staff that calls that?
They're all retired.
I think so.
Nobody here has seen that.
No, I think it's just the mayor might remember because there was, and I forget who the party was that was kind of spirited in it, it was somebody that was too far with the arts.
That may have been.
And they were kind of running with this concept of a mixed use development there that would include municipal facilities, art-based facilities and retail, and I think some residential up above. And it was, it had a shelf life, I think of about a year. And then, I don't know whether it died, he died, or, but everything like that.
I believe that had to do with the bond issue that failed in the late 90s because that was the alternate, that was the proposal for the building.
Yeah, there was a group that wanted to move into there.
Yeah, probably a group with no money, but great ideas.
Okay, yeah. Well, our consultants are giving us, I think, a message with regard to what Mr. Hector said in that double-edged sword about spending money outside and inside town. The message that we're getting back is that people on the outside really do feel that, and not everyone, of course, you weren't going to lose some votes, but that there are more people that feel that a smaller bond to fix a bigger, more pressing problem is more palatable. Of course, there are those that will vote no because they're not getting anything out of it directly. Well, I think that's all I'll say about that.
I, that's one of the sort of, I've been out knocking on doors recently and talking to folks. And Eugene Fields is almost beyond a rational conversation. We talked to a lot of folks and it, it's become a symbol of some sort in terms of, I see some nods down there. It becomes difficult to fight a symbol with numbers. And I do have one quick question. The field, the north Eugene Field, is that used by the school now or just by the community in general?
It's used by the school some, not, not a lot, I don't think. There's probably getting kids across the road and, you know, you have to have open two sets of gates and have people watching and some things like that. So it's used, is it used more, Jennifer, is it more in the springtime and P E?
We really only utilize that the first and last month of school.
Okay.
But the community does use it.
Yeah.
I didn't quite hear it, sorry.
Oh, the principal at Eugene Field said they only really utilize the field the first and last month of school, but the community does use it a lot.
Oh, yeah, I know. They do a lot for, that's our school district, dog park.
Yeah. And just to tag on to what Owen said a little bit about, and what Mr. Hector said about the possibility of some people, you know, in the outline areas voting against a bond that just included Eugene Field, even though, you know, the outline buildings have a lot of needs, facility needs also, one of the main, one of the things we keep hearing a lot about from community members and teachers and staff is technology needs. And the technology needs in this district are, are going to be huge in the month, in the years ahead with some of the new state testing and things coming down. And so that's one thing that, you know, in my mind, again, we may have to try to include some of that stuff, some of the technology needs in a. we may have to try to include some of that stuff, some of the lack of technology needs in a bond measure to try to bring everyone to the same level of tech, technology.
As well as security upgrades.
Yeah, technology and infrastructure and security upgrades, so. So, there might be some, you know, we may need to do some little, some tweaking there too and add, add some things that are really, really necessary.
Has there been any thought about doing, it's almost like specialized marketing of different school properties that then become magnet schools for a particular discipline, like Bethany is for the arts and Victor Point is for science or something like that, so that there is people from other areas, you can transfer from school to school, I understand, without penalty. And, you know, I think it's, it's expensive to put a really, really good science teacher in every building and staff the, staff it and have the equipment for it, but centralizing something like that and the arts and athletics or whatever so that you've got a reason for people to use the outlined schools that don't necessarily live right next to them, so that they become entities unto themselves.
We really don't have a problem keeping the schools full. I think all our buildings are, well, most, most buildings are almost max population right now.
Yeah. And a big part of that is drawn from outside our district.
Yeah.
A lot of the buildings that you have.
And, and from in town, to be frank. If, if all the, all the school kids that lived in town went to the town schools, we would have a big problem with space. So, it really helps us out that some parents want to move their kids out of town.
Okay.
I just have off-the-wall notion and I'm half-baked, so I apologize for, I wrote one out. That is, has the school board ever considered running two bond notes, one which refurbishes Eugene Field and the other which demolishes Eugene Fields?
We haven't, no, we've never discussed that.
But there was a kind of a menu thing. There was a menu way, way back, at least 20 years ago. There was a menu that we could vote on. Everybody just voted everything down.
I think that was the city of the school district.
Oh, okay.
We had, you want a police department, you want a fire department, you want a police library. You know, we were, we were, Ken and I went through the desperation times, so don't want to do that again. But, yeah, it's, it's out there.
Yeah, people like, I don't think people like the menu idea. They want their leaders to have a good idea, so.
Why start now?
Is the next, is the police station the next big thing that the city is looking at as far as a bond? Something that would require a bond measure? Police station standing, you know.
Probably, yes, you know, yes. And I believe we've also started 100,000 a year. Was that starting in 14?
In 13.
13, excuse me, from the general.
We're going to try and put 200,000.
200,000, excuse me. So, banking, trying to bank some money ahead of that bond levy. But Tim, that actually brings up a great point. Is, have, is there any assessed values of bare land there? If, if it was raised and then what would the value of that bare land be?
We, we took a look at it several years ago. I don't remember the numbers, but it did, did come back that the land was actually more valuable without the building there than.
That's why I asked the question that way, yeah. Yeah. I mean, if we're trying to really get drilled down, in my opinion, one, Eugene Field should be closed. Two, it would be a great place for a police department. Three, if we put one there, I think the whole place should be razed and start from scratch. But that's just a quick thing on that.
I think one of the, and just to add on a little bit here, I think one of the things that we think we have learned in the last bond election and the conversations surrounding that is that there's just enormous affection with a sizable percentage of the public for that old building. And, you know, as a school district, we have a very specific focus and that's housing and educating youngsters. But I think that what we think we have learned has sensitized us to the idea that maybe we ought not to be talking about the school district demolishing the building and creating a bare space there. We'll let someone else do that and, and try to provide the opportunity. If there's enough momentum, enough interest, and people can come together to save this historic building that so many have affection for, then we're not going to stand in their way as a school district. I think that's a pretty fair assessment of where the conversation went with the task force. And I, I can't speak for the whole board, but I think after some of our initial post-task force conversations, that's kind of what we're thinking right now. We don't want to antagonize more folks than necessary if we're trying to provide money to build space to house and educate our kids.
Are there other ideas in this group for uses for that building? Because that's one of the things we have heard is a lot of people are really attached to that, to the old building and don't want to see it torn down.
I mean, I was attached to my grandparents, but, you know, they reached an age when they went away. We didn't, we didn't dismantle them.
Well, yeah. Well, Ken, I agree with you. I agree, I totally agree with you.
But what's interesting is when you, you talk to people anecdotally about Eugene Field and there are people who are, let's just say they're more seasoned than I am, and they'll say, my God, I went there 65 years ago. If it was good enough for me, then it was good, it's good enough for these kids today. And then you say to them, John, when was the last time you replaced your car? Like, oh, three years ago. Well, what about your car? Well, I got a new one five years ago. You know, I mean, it just doesn't register. They realize we have to make all these other replacements in life because things were out. I mean, you know, your water heater or your furnace, you know, but there's such this sentimental attachment to Eugene Field and, you know, God bless those people. But where's the sentimentality when the next good shaker comes along and your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren are in that building? Then what are you going to say? Well, nothing's going to happen. I mean, it just, at some point, you just have them say, if you won't look at this rationally, I'm sorry, but.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that's true, although I have a lot of respect for historical buildings, but I don't, I think they're, Eugene Field has been, has, I know that when my daughters were there, they couldn't use, we weren't able to go into the basement because it was unsafe. And the part of the gymnasium was condemned 30 years ago. So, it's just, it's hanging on to something that, that wasn't structurally terribly, couldn't have been terribly sound 90 years ago or it wouldn't be in the shape it's in today. But besides that, it's just, it would be nice. And I think there's a, there's a problem with the ideas of that from exterior is quite charming and quite nostalgic of, of schools of that era, but it's, and to replace it with a rectangular brick fortress is not very appetizing. So, I think if that were ever to come to pass, the city would have to be careful that it was, that it was designed to be pleasing to the eye and, but any building that replaced it.
Bill, did the same sentiments with Schleter Campus building?
We've heard some of the same sentiments, yeah.
Not as much, but yes.
Yeah.
I like Eugene Field. It's just a great place to visit. Nice tall ceilings. I'm just talking about the upstairs. Really nice in the school and the staff are really good too. So, I get the privilege every year of going and talking to third graders, all the third graders. And it's a kick in the pants. I'm looking forward to that. Part of it's the kids, part of it's the school.
I have a very slightly different perspective because 60 years ago, I went to Eugene Field for.
I didn't want to use your name.
Yeah. Half-day kindergarten and then through fifth grade. And back then, it was a gigantic space. You would go in and the rooms were huge. Every room was a gymnasium. It was amazing. Of course, then I figured out I'm this tall. And now, at, at this height going in there, it's like, gosh, this place got small all of a sudden. But it's, you know, it's a historic structure that, as you say, a lot of the community has, has roots that go back to. And if, if we can figure out a way to preserve it and continue using it, you know, whether it's public use or private use, we need to, we need to go in that direction rather than saying, well, let's kill grandpa and cook his bones down for glue.
Bill? You know, I've lived here just over 15 years, so I can't attach any sentimental value to it. The reason I said raise it is because I knew, somebody here said that the value of the property was worth more with the building gone. That's, that's primarily why I said that, so.
And all costs, big.
But we have not exactly had a resurgence or an insurgence of building activity in our downtown. If the, if the ground were available and vacant, it would be available and vacant till my grandchildren were here, probably. And for those of you who don't know, we have not yet had any children.
So, I guess just, if I could just add to that, Mr. Chair, I think, you know, I grew up in a small town and had similar issues and sort of politically inclined even as a kid. And I, I think, you know, you get into the argument of whether bare ground is, I mean, in a city where there isn't a great deal of buildable space, you get into the discussion of whether it's more valuable as bare ground than with a historic building on it. Historic building almost always loses. So, I think, you know, if you want to apply that logic, all of downtown Silverton would be more valuable with the historic buildings were gone. And I think that's, that's really an analysis that doesn't hold up in the end because one of the things, at least in my view, having lived here for 37 years, is that it is the historic buildings and the historic feel of downtown Silverton that attracts people from everywhere. So, I, I think that's a real positive, even though it realistically would be more valuable if handy hardware building. It's just a lot, you know, so.
Mr. Chair, well, I, I actually disagree with the balance of the downtown on that comment you made, that's here and there. But, but here's, here's what makes the starting point so difficult. If, if you're trying to get consensus or some good deliberation is if, you know, if there was, if we were in a pinch and we knew we could pass a bond levy, the same is, the same holds true with trying to renovate that building for a new school as it would to try to renovate it for a police department, though we, we might be into it for more than the 16,000 square foot building that we had a price on of 12 million. Does that sound right, Jeff? Something like that? In 2008. So, that's, that's what's going to make all of our jobs more difficult.
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to do here is say, you know, the council's on board with the school district, moving the kids out of Eugene Field. They need a, a location for a police department. But to renovate a 12 to 16,000 piece of that's going to cost 15 million or if bare ground's 12, that's, makes it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You guys would be kind of in the same place we are with the renov, with the renovation.
Mr. Chair, I think that's, I think that's part of the problem that, that is the city faces is we are under mandate with the police department and that's going to require a bond issue at some point. We're just not going to have that much money that we're going to be able to have set aside. On top of that, there's a talk about going out, looking at a parks and recreation type district and doing some bonding. There's bonding with the pool that's going to expire. And so, we've got some bonds that are coming up that some of the tough decisions will be made. And generally, we've tried to coordinate some of our bonds with what's happening with the Silverfall School District so that we don't run into voters having to make choices or just choosing no on everything.
What's the timeframe on some of those?
That I defer to.
You have three years left on that pool bond?
Four years almost. Four years? Yeah.
Four years left on the pool?
Yeah.
It's an operating lease.
Yeah, it's operating.
Yeah, bonded, yeah.
But to the general public, they're paying money. It's another tax issue.
And parks and rec no plans?
It's just, it's all in the beginning, early discussion stage, so it's too early to predict what's going to happen on that situation.
Although that's something that certainly the school district, we would want to partner with because that's, I know the, the only other one that I, when Mike Beaverton, the school district, when it started that, the push to get the Walton Hills Park and Rec district formed. So, it would be something we definitely want to do jointly.
And that, Mr. Chair, has fallen up on some of the, you know, we've had concerns with the seniors center as that is coming to expiration as far as financially, as well as the Pettit property, which some of you may have read about occasionally that in the paper and how we are going to deal with that. And there's been discussions on bonding to making general sewer fund payments. But those are some of the concerns the city's facing.
What about a, what about a private developer for Eugene Field? I mean, is that.
Break them up.
Yeah. Do something totally different with the site. I mean, then, you know, in that case, again, the school district will only have so much control over what that developer would do with the building, but, or with, with or without the building. But, I mean, from what we're saying, what the discussion has been here, it's, it, it kind of sounds to me like that may be one of the only ways to preserve the building if that's what everyone in the community, the majority of the community would like to see. Agree or disagree on that one? But David?
Well, I think that, that, you know, the consensus of the task force, and this was a very interesting group because we brought people in that hadn't served on the previous study groups that had looked at facilities or looked at Eugene Field. And they came from all over the school district, all different kinds of walks of life, attorneys, farmers, all sorts of people. And one of the things, some were very critical of the building, some weren't very much in favor of saving it. But one thing that we came to all agree on is that it's not really a suitable place for students going into the future. The other thing is that we didn't have specific recommendations about how the building should be saved. We simply recognized that there was interest in some quarters in trying to save the building or portions of the building. I think it doesn't necessarily have to be all or nothing, but the idea was that, you know, after spending time in the building, we had some of our meetings there and walking around, I think every single person on the task force recognized that this was kind of an amazing piece of history and it felt really good to be there. If it could be repurposed by whatever entity, that would be really a good thing. And it would be positive for the school district in terms of support for a bond because some of the support, some of the lack of support came from the fact that people who have affection for this building didn't want to see us tear it down. So, we don't, I, I think, once again, not speaking for the whole board, but I think the direction we're heading is that as a school district, we don't want to be the ones to tear it down. See what we can do with it. I mean, if a private entity would be great, if it like Medallions, you know, or some entity like that wanted to, to renovate the property or portion of it.
I think we also have to look at some, get our legal folks involved too, because I think if we tear the building down with the intent to sell or, or maybe getting in, in some speculation, which we need to stay away from.
Ken?
Well, you know, when, I think it was in the 90s when there was that discussion of, of creating a mixed use thing. As I recall, that discussion, the school district was, the thought process is they would sell. And obviously not for enough money to go build a school. But the one thing there, there wasn't at that was any kind of timeline for when that might occur. And so, if you're talking to potential developers, I think you have to be a little more finite in terms of timelines. Well, now that you've sort of established a timeline of 16, 17 for closure, I think maybe it's time to try and find somebody willing to do a market analysis, getting out to the, the broader development community. It's not, certainly not likely to happen locally to kind of, to talk to, to develop a city block for in-where, especially if it's multipurpose use, to see if there is a, any interest out there, whether it's in Oregon or beyond Oregon, to do something with that property. And if so, what kind of interest? And at least, you know, it's great to talk about what it might be, but if nobody's interested in it, that's a huge thing. So, we now have a timeline and we can say to people, you know, we're looking at this being available in two to three years. So, you know, maybe, you know, and in terms of big developments, that's, you know, those are common timelines for people that are looking at putting together a funding package and that kind of thing. So, maybe if we can find somebody that would do that mark, that type of market analysis, it would be beneficial and give us a sense of, are we, is this a pipe dream or can we really think? really think of something to go in there other than the police department?
Yeah, yeah. That's good, that's a very good point.
Problem, though, with that is that those people who are, who are fond of the historical building would absolutely lose any control of the future of that site. So it would, in many ways, I don't, I have real negative feelings about it, about, obviously the city would have input, but not, they wouldn't be able to control it as far as whether the school stayed or not, or...
No. And they should?
No.
Well, but it's a very central part of town.
But it's going to be a central part of town that at some point is going to crumble down.
Well, I'm not a defender of Eugene Field, but I do, to me, the best scenario would be if somehow it could remain city property.
The difficulty we have with that, though, is that any redevelopment of it as public property is phenomenal extensive. Whatever you, whatever you could do it for privately, triple.
But we do have to have that police station, and somewhere it's got to be located in the city limits.
Right. We have property, we can build a police station on.
Which we haven't been, the community hasn't been very supportive of.
No, it is the council, but push comes to shove and we've got the ground. That may be where we stick it. But, you know, I have said Eugene Field, that area would be ideal for city operations because it is centrally located, but if it's goplated with lack of inserts and, you know, there are coin-operated locks on all the doors, we can't do it.
Mayor's absolutely right. If you get a private developer, David's vacants out the window, and you put a dollar, your money in there, you're dead, so...
But also, if we place restrictions, either us or the city places restrictions that would require that building to be used in some fashion, it seems to me that we're devaluing that property to the marketplace, and that way we're subsidizing the sentimentality of keeping it, so it's still going to cost us as a public, you know, if we choose to place our dollars towards...
And, Mr. Chair, that's a valid point, because I believe that is zoned public use and would have to be rezoned by the city council.
Oh, it would have to be rezoned.
Yeah, nobody would buy it if it was a public use.
There's your answer. Do we have an idea what the property is worth?
We did evaluate, we did look at it several years ago. Again, I don't remember what the cost was, and it's been so long ago, it's going to come out the window anyway. We have a look at it recently.
I have a quick question. Jervis, although it's a very small area, history of failed bonds, and the school board decided to go ahead and build a new facility without going through a bond. Why could you explain how, does anybody understand what they did up there?
I think, go ahead, Andy.
And I may not have it revealed in detail correct, Scott, but it's mine. They actually constructed off-site, volume entry modular buildings and brought them in, and centralized their schools within the city of Jervis. So they brought their rural, closed a couple of their rural buildings and brought them in. They've also had a decline in enrollment over the last few years in Jervis, so they couldn't keep their schools full, is my understanding as well. But second to that, there are some options that I don't fully understand available to public entities to borrow capital sufficient with action of the governing body. Up to a limit, I don't know what that limit is, but there are some funds available for limited use for capital construction, and that's what Jervis used.
Okay.
And did Jervis sell a couple of properties? I don't know if those sales have gone through, Ken. I, they had two properties for sale, but they've gone through, I'm not certain.
Yeah, I think Rick Hensel, the superintendent, indicated at an earlier meeting that they did in fact ultimately sell that helped facilitate the funding to do their stuff.
Strange thought, that some counties, that the sheriff, for example, will float it, will designate an area and do an enhanced law enforcement district or something. I mean, this is not exactly Eugene Field related, but can the rural schools do a special enhanced education district around their geographic base to fund their school individually, or was that precluded by the consolidation?
I believe it's all precluded by consolidation. We're all one district now.
Right, but we're all one county. And Marion County can do a special or an enhanced law enforcement district, just by a vote of the people in that district. So as an alternative source of funding for other areas, I mean, I admit it's a crazy idea, those are the kind I usually have.
No, Andy Beaverton?
I've never heard of that, but it's worth looking into and asking the questions anyways, too. Can't rule in if we don't know enough about it.
I guess, the only thing, the school district is one legal entity post-consolidation, all of the other, there are no other boundaries except attendance boundaries, which is the Silverfall School District. And I think we're talking about, you know, the issues of the rural elementary school communities not being supportive of something that's just going to be built in downtown Silverton. This is an issue that we're working on as a school board right now. We have forced consolidation about a decade ago, and we still have residual bad feelings about that in some quarters. And in some respects, I think the thinking of the district's a little bit Balkanized, if that makes sense. And one of the things that we're really looking at as a board of directors is working to help everyone understand that we're all in this together now. We are one school district. We respect, you know, the different communities. That's how we started out with consolidation at the outset, is to respect the integrity and sort of the history and traditions of each of the rural former school districts. But, you know, 10 years out now, we really need to put away some of those, some of that thinking and work together for the common good. And I think that's something that we're talking a lot about as a school board right now.
They are not as closer to 20 now.
Does anybody else have other thoughts? And look at the agenda, I think we've covered most, most everything. We've talked about mutual concerns, construction projects, Eugene Field. Julie?
I don't know if this is even possible, but I was thinking though, that in the sell of the own property, if there was a stipulation that there was a presidencies that went specifically to reflect on the arts and, you know, that would support the history of Silverton, I mean, something that was, and I don't know if that's even to be written into something when you sell a property, and not necessarily even save the building, but that there was some part of that that had to be something that would be reflecting on Silverton as another positive, you know, structural beautification of Silverton, just sort of odd mod out there.
And your school board decision, if they wanted to set aside some proceeds of the sale for some particular... That's your decision, it's your...
I don't know how it works, but I'm just saying that that might be something that would help in that process.
Sounds like we pretty well beat it to death between the two groups, the council and the school board. And the school board has a respective session after this?
We do.
Mr. Chair? Well, do you, I mean, are we, did you get something out of this, or is there some more you, that, you know? Actually, Randall covered some good bases about some other things that are on the plate right now, or in the queue for, for possible bond levies or operating or things like that. Did you get a consensus that you feel like the movement of the children from Eugene Field is the direction the council supports, or?
It seems, seems that way to me, from what you guys' comments. And I also, it also seems to me that the city's interested in that property for future use, that, you know, you have a lot of the same issues that we have.
Yeah, I'd like to know how interested you are. Is it a real possibility or is it quite a... Do you know?
Well, Mr. Chair, well, a great question, and kind of I touched on it briefly more than once now, is I, the consensus or the feeling I get, and, and obviously the school board has much more of a connection to the community, I believe, when it comes to the sentimental value, the historical value of that building. So that, you know, if that's the direction, the building remains, the historical value remains, then that makes our jobs harder, because, again, if we were to have, if we were genuinely interested, and the price was right from the school district, and it fit within what, what directions we have to go to purchase it and erect or refurbish the existing building, then it makes, how we determine the cost to either build a 16,000 square foot building or refurbish enough to make that equal amount, it could be millions of dollars apart.
Dollar down. They can be eyes on the better on the field just north of the school as potential police site, because if the clean slate's...
But there were, Mr. Chair, there were some, Randall, help me out here, because as you said earlier, I think you and I were the only ones that may have been on at the time. Maybe, still you may, yeah, you were too. Excuse me. There were, there were some deficiencies of just that parcel. That were pretty, pretty well spelled out in the document that we received, in the analysis that we received, yeah.
It doesn't seem like it'd be big enough.
Yeah, I know.
It seems like that street could be moved and it could be made bigger. I don't know if the difficulties in that are, but...
But part of the, part of the concept, Mr. Chair, was to have access off of B Street as a boy, and purchase that vacant lot or use the alley, which I think has since been dedicated over somewhere else into an entrance for the police vehicles into the property. But it was just a conceptual drawing that went into authorize into architectural plans at that point.
Mr. Willby brought up the exploration last year, I think, of the Sonic Building, which turned out, again, into, became a huge mess, because it would have been two or three times what was anticipated to bring it up to standard. So Eugene Field certainly has issues that would probably preclude our being able to remodel it.
I mean, Eugene Field has a lot of interest to me as the city manager, but I need more information in terms of when is it going to be available, and how much is it going to cost, and details of trying to develop it. But it's an ideal location. It's, it's the best location downtown in terms of having a police department go anywhere in the city and have access to the transportation system. So I think we'd be extremely interested in pursuing whatever opportunity there might be, but it needs to begin to get defined a little better for us.
Yeah.
That's all we can ask for at this, at this point in time, is we don't have an approved bond, we have a proposed timeline, that's basically all we have.
And that's one thing we do need to do, is start defining a lot of this more than what we have. And that's the plan.
But we, if we, it would, if it were defined as a community's building where the police would be housed, and also all the resources that citizens would need in the event of an emergency, or, I mean, it could have some, some selling power, don't you think?
Well, we discussed mutual needs, which is great, but I think maybe a good follow-up to that, even though, you know, we kind of put out our wish lists, some of the police stations not on wish lists, that's a have to do, but other things like a park and rec district and, you know, some of the other things, I think we ought to put those to writing. The city ought to commit those to writing, I mean, they're not confirmed, but at least to give the school district a sense of, okay, the city's considering a park and rec district, which would, if we did it, would require a vote connected, just to give some information so that we don't walk away from this meeting in a month and a half and forget everything we said. At least, as we both planned, we can look back at some, okay, we need to check with the school district, because now we're kind of firming up on this action plan, how does that mesh up with any plans you might have? Because operating in a vacuum isn't going to get us anywhere. If we all of a sudden, you know, we announce we're going to go out for a bond levy or an operating levy, and you guys are thinking the same thing, and we haven't talked, that's why I think this would be a good tickler sheet if we do that, that we can refer to.
And also, again, why the park and rec district should be a joint effort between the city and the school.
Yeah, that's true.
One of the critical reasons to get the two groups, the two boards together, was just so that we would all introduce ourselves to the other players, and be able to have these conversations and know who we're talking to. And I think we've done a good job with that this evening, too.
David?
Well, I just, I agree. I, you know, I would just propose that we don't come here this evening to make any decisions, but to share ideas and to let you as the city council, the governing body for this town of Silverton proper, know what we're thinking and what we're doing and what we think we've learned, and those kind of things. I think it's really important that we share that kind of information back and forth. Randall and I talked just briefly at the beginning of the meeting, we used to do this joint meeting and sharing of ideas and issues and kind of directions more regularly, and I hope we can come back to that. I think it's very, very useful, especially since, at least in my view and the view of lots of other people, the well is a lot shallower in terms of public, the availability of money for public projects. So I think it makes a lot of sense for us to work more closely together if we can.
Definitely.
Yes. Just one other quick question for the city council members, how, and this may be a little bit premature, but how would the city council feel about the school district going for a bond this November?
The sooner we can replace that, that old building, the better. I think if you've got a good idea, that's great.
I don't think we're looking at anything this year.
I'm concerned that he just, he failed at a name, and coming back so soon, people might feel as though he didn't hear us the first time. I'm just saying, you know, so if I were on the school board, I'd lay it off for another election cycle, not come back right away, just on a pure politics situation.
I'd go just the opposite.
I mean, why, I kind of mean in relation to the city's plans. And I appreciate that, Scott, and we have talked about that.
Potentially there's a park and rec district on the ballot, which is a building...
Not in that.
I don't, no.
2014?
No. That's a low way zone.
Yeah, it's not going to happen.
They're supposed to report in June on their plans, so we'll have to take action of some sort at that time.
And is it a year away, a couple years away?
At least a year away, to do enough groundwork. And, Mr. Chair, I think that's why this November would be ideal as far as the city's concerned, because if it were to be put off another year or so, we start running into potential bonds or operating levies or other issues that the city may be facing.
I concur with that.
Okay.
As do I.
Okay, thank you.
Well, people have to, to sort of, realizing the sentimental value of Eugene Field is not worth the potential loss of life. If there were an earthquake, like, Malala was just so lucky that happened on a Sunday, and Eugene Field is so susceptible.
Well, Malala High School fell down and Eugene Field is still standing.
Yeah, but the...
Yeah, I would say, recent Malala.
Yeah.
No, it's Mount Angel.
Yeah. Future, future meeting dates? Anybody interested in doing this again?
Mr. Chair, as David said, you know, I think if you guys are fast-tracking for November, I, I'm always speaking for myself here, but I think in three months or four months, another meeting just to see where you're at, and maybe have some more solid figures for us to work off of. Because you, you're going to have to have those numbers for us in three or four months, or you're going to have, it's going to make your job in November more difficult.
That's a, that's a, that's a real good point.
But if you go out in November, has anyone made a deadline for five weeks?
I'm not sure.
No, it's 60 days prior, 60 days prior. No, it's 60 days prior, 60 days prior.
By August, first week of August, probably.
60 days, it's September, late August.
Yeah, late August.
We should do it by November, it's a hell of a quarter.
Sure. Yeah, we were, we're, that's a decision we're going to have to make fairly soon if we go, see, see, but in November. But Bill, I like your, I like your comment about, you know, if we do decide to go for a bond, maybe getting together again in four months, and we would have more firm figures, because that's one thing that I've kind of heard from the community is, you know, to have more of a plan than we did the last time, as far as Eugene Field goes. So, because before we just said we were going to sell, and, so, that might be a good idea. If we had some more firm figures, we could maybe, you know, talk to you guys a little bit more about your interest and collaborate on something along those lines.
Well, regardless of whether you decide to go out, I think it's beneficial, we have dialogue a couple of times a year.
Yeah, I would agree.
Nothing sad could come of that, only good things come, if we talk at least a couple times a year or so.
One hypothetical question, though, which way hypothetical, let us suppose that the bond election in November, between now and then, we find someone, a megalith or something, who said, "I'm really interested in purchasing the Eugene Field School property," and we hang our hats on that. Is there going to be, you get, you get an agreement with someone, whoever that is, what are the public policy ramifications of having a buyer without having advertised the property or competitive bidding or...
We're talking about zone change, though, too. We're talking about, the, the zone change.
Well, I would, that would be predicated on it having, I'm just saying, are we going to open ourselves up to people in the community saying, "Well, why'd you give them a sweetheart deal when I would have given you $12.50 for it, and they only gave you $11.75," or something like that?
Mr. Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if and when the school district decides to sell, you have to have the first public meeting declared surplus property.
Yeah.
And at that point, the whole world knows that you are going to put this thing up for sale. You can't engage in a sale prior to doing that. You can't write a sweetheart deal. So, you have to have that on the process.
That's correct.
Because it severely limits your, your potential suitors then.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Not necessarily. I don't think it limits you, it's just it, it's a process.
You have to go through the process, yes, it's a process.
It's just you can't cut the deal before you do that, that would be a violation of law.
Okay. Anything else?
I think this is really good, I, I think that there are other issues, you know, that are kind of ongoing that would be useful for us to talk about.
I would agree.
The two governmental entities here, green space, for example, in the city of Silverton, the school district is currently the major provider of green space, our need for a school resource officer, and how we might work together to, to do that. So, if we have a lot, there's a lot potentially that we have to talk about as the two major governmental entities here with kind of intertwined or, you know, meshed interests.
And get a buy-in from both bodies.
When you say that about the green space, is that, there's the Westfield property, and are you including that also?
All the mall fields.
Pardon?
All the mall fields.
All the mall fields, yeah.
The green space near Mark Twain School, for example, the old trees.
Do we get credit for the 40 acres of Pioneer?
I mean, don't know. But, yeah, I think the maintenance of those spaces is in expense to the school district.
Which is why we all need to get on board with the parks.
Yeah, as you guys move further into that, that would be a good topic of discussion for a future...
A lot to talk about, I think. A lot to, a lot of sharing in front of the house.
Yeah, really.
So, if the school board decides to go for a bond, shall we look at another meeting, possibly July, August, somewhere?
I think we should need to let you...
Either what?
Get you ready, and I, you go out, because by then, we'll have some more discussions, I'm sure, because we're going to go through budget, and we'll have more discussions about what our needs are, and maybe some timelines will come into focus on the more site. Again, I don't think spending an hour or so like this is going to hurt, and it can be beneficial to both agencies and as well as the public.
I think it also helps our communication with the broader public as well.
I would agree.
More of us talking together here.
Yeah.
And also, on the early renewal dollars that we, that we, since it's the school district that is affected, if, when we spend that money, because it's money that the school district doesn't get, those are things that we need to agree on to go.
I think the school district gets backfill from that, from state education funding for lost property tax, right? I'm sure. Maybe the July meeting, hold a session.
Yeah, that might work, July, early, July or early August. Late July, early August. We can have, maybe Andy and Bob kind of coordinate on that a little bit and see what might work out. Okay?
These are usually tough times to get everybody together.
Yeah, they are.
We don't have workshops in July, really, I know.
You don't?
Nobody shows up.
We can't get anyone there.
It may, it may...
We still have council meetings.
Yeah, even August, you know, mid, mid-August might be, we'll see. You guys can coordinate, we could, they can talk to Stu and I about it, we can figure something out possibly. The, the school board usually has an extended work session middle, mid, mid-August, mid to late August, so we could maybe possibly, you know, have part of that set aside for a meeting with the city council.
Can that be separate, be a regular school board meeting, which is what, the second Monday?
Yeah, yeah.
So, this would be later in the month?
Our, our, usually in August, we have an extended work session, one or two weeks after the regular, the regular school board meeting. So, we could have maybe time together, and we could spend an hour, hour and a half with you guys, and then continue on with what we needed to do.
So, call that our board retreat.
Extended work session.
Correct. We used to call it a retreat.
Yeah, we...
We put on Hawaii insurance at the district office. Okay, I'll work to you, Corey.
Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone, for coming. Thank you to the audience. If you guys have any comments, please pull one of us aside and bend our ear. We're going to move out of regular session, the school board needs to stay because we have an executive session in a five minutes or so. Thank you very much.